Clark?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the record show, trustee Ertmer is not in attendance this evening, and clerk Blau is in attendance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the township of Riverside Board of Trustees meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? During the roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Any communications?
None.
Any visitor remarks? Jane Franck?
I would say a little more about the county's office. It's a busy time right now. We're still processing exemptions. The Cook County Council's office has extended the deadline for super exemptions to April first. So, we're still, we're going to be at, be doing it for a while. And now through our second, Riverside Township can file appeals with the Cook County Council's office. Our office will be assisting residents, taxpayers, with comparables and finding the best way to file their appeals. And first was government property tax bills by June, March.
Thank you. Any other visitors hearing none? Supervisor's report. Just in the front of your packets is the thirty-third annual township topic state that's been appealed, Tuesday, May fifth. And there is a sign up sheet for the, I believe it's May... Early May for Fall Conference at, no, May twentieth. Fall Conference for TAC at William Tell. There's a sign up sheet right at the, by your boxes. So you're looking on the bulletin board for it.
It's the spring conference.
Permit?
It's the spring conference?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's what I was.
Any trustees reports?
The seniors' meeting was canceled in February due to the weather. So, our next meeting will be actually Wednesday, March eleventh, and we will be having a Mardi Gras party.
And you guys on?
March eleventh?
February twenty-second.
Yes, February twenty-second is our speakers event on the Eastland disaster. And we will have the head of the Eastland Disaster Society be speaking. And it's Sunday, February twenty-second at two o'clock in the auditorium. And refreshments will be served.
Any other trustees reports?
Just to comment on that, I don't know if you saw it on the news, just like within the last couple days, they uncovered some video.
Yes.
Yeah, I wondered if they might have that and bring it.
I'm not sure. I'm sure they, I'm sure they know about it and they probably will, but yeah, that was just recently on the news.
And then I was gonna suggest, you know, the li, maybe the library could do this for us to advertise the event. If you go on to the library website, the first thing that comes up is, on their site is a scrolling message of all of the events that are coming up in the library for the next month or so. And maybe we could do a little piece on that, and I think a lot of people would see it that way.
I can check with them. I'm also gonna advertise this on Town Connection, which is, and the Riverside Exchange. The library unfortunately has a dual event at that same time on Downington Abbey.
Oh dear.
They're having tea in the great room.
So they might know that's what.
They have prizes, forget it.
I'd still ask.
I would ask. To them, because normally they're very helpful to me.
And you could probably get it on the, on eFlash from the Village of Riverside. I don't know if Riverside has a similar mechanism, but the Village, I'm sure.
Oh yes, you know what, that's what, I will talk with Kathy Haley tomorrow, 'cause she has asked me previously if there's anything like this to let her know.
Yeah.
They called with Riverside too.
Okay.
And she's sending in the head office.
Yeah, I can take some brochures over there tomorrow too. I have, their ads will be going in the landmark this week and next week. And then I put some signs around town today, in the banks and at Riverside Foods. And I also announced it at Lions Club at lunch.
And the board of report?
Working on our budget, yeah, should have it next week.
Under old business, changes for township budget and orderings, we're gonna do that in March, but would anybody care to have, hold a special meeting before then? Or just talk about it in March and then afterwards, hold a special meeting in case if there's, you know, any?
Well, if we were gonna do a meeting, I think we'd wanna do it before the March meeting, because remember you need that thirty days before adoption for viewing.
But does anybody want one? That's why I asked.
I mean.
Nobody said anything.
I don't.
Well, how?
Do we need to discuss it? I know we had a special meeting last year and we went through it line by line.
I mean, I think that's a good idea itself.
Okay.
I would have to say I can agree with Ann.
Does anybody have a date in mind that they would? Before the March meeting, which is?
What about?
March tenth?
Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, or Tuesday, February twenty-fourth?
I won't be here.
You won't be here?
Well, when are you gone?
I'll be back on the twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay.
Would you, Thursday the twenty-sixth, would that work, or Wednesday the eighteenth?
Eighteenth is no good for me, the twenty-sixth is good for me.
Twenty-sixth, I'm open. Lane?
I'm okay.
You okay?
Is that okay with you, Lane?
Yeah, I'll be home, I'll be home the twenty-fifth.
So, February twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
At one time.
Can anybody make it here at six, six-thirty? Bless you.
Thank you. I can make it at six.
I can make it at six, if it works for me.
Okay.
Six? Yep.
And, um...
So we'll be out here by nine or ten, right? Eleven, twelve, yeah.
I would also offer to buy pizza for us, if anybody is interested in that.
It's a good idea.
Feed them and they will come.
Right, exactly.
We'll hold it in Room Three, like we always do.
Okay.
Is, I don't think that should be occupied at that time, but if it is, I'll let everybody know what we're doing. Okay. Plaque to honor Judy Bartopinka, I had a meeting with some residents within the township. They checked with the state. Because the building is historical, the state has nothing to say with it. So that, you know, they're fine, you know, whatever we wanted to do. The only thing that would be concerned to them is if local ordinance for anything on the exterior of the building, we'd have to follow local ordinances, meaning going through the Preservation Committee and then the Board. Or, and if we put it on the inside, that's our decision, we, you know, we don't have to go through anybody.
Good.
So, you know, where, where would you like to have it put, do you think?
Well, what are we talking about?
A plaque.
A plaque?
Well, you're talking about renaming the building also, aren't you?
I'm talking about dedicating the building to it. Some people are calling it renaming the building. I'm, you know, I'm calling it dedicated.
But we're gonna put a name on it.
We're, we're not gonna call it, you know, I don't think Riverside, Judy Bartopinka, Riverside Township Paul.
No, just Topinka is all we need.
Well, you know, whatever the Board would think.
Anyway.
Well, I thought that this was federal, the landmark status, not state.
There's nothing to do with it, no. Drop it, investigate it then.
Okay.
I mean, we could play it safe and get a plaque for the interior, you know.
I don't want the plaque on the outside.
See, the problem with the plaque on the outside, which is no real big problem, is that the only requirement the government outside, the local government, would have is that we don't drill into the stone blocks. We drill into the mortar between to attach it.
Drill into what?
The mortar, you know, between each block swing.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, you know, we can, we can think about for another month, give you something to, you know.
Do we know how large the plaque is?
Well, you know, you know, I had this put out last month, there is, this is the one people seem to like. I put an X by it and a cross of it.
With that, with that plaque, would there be some type of presentation or a?
Yes.
Ceremony or what?
Right. Whether inside or outside. But it won't be done till the spring, when it's warmer. May, June. 'Cause it's gonna take a while to have a bronze plaque made anyway.
Yeah, it won't be done by then.
Six to eight weeks, it says.
Okay, and? I'll put it out for next month too.
And can we take a look at that? I mean, not necessarily now, but that.
So this is twenty-four by eighteen?
I will leave it out by the cutting boards, paper cutter. Okay. New business grants. We have a grant for Riverside Arts Weekend from, uh, Rock. They are looking for a grant for fourteen hundred dollars. We gave them fourteen hundred dollars in two fourteen. Any questions or concerns? Do I hear a motion?
Jean, when is the arts weekend?
I can't hear you.
Oh, I was, when is the arts weekend? I was addressing Jean in the audience. It's usually the third weekend in May.
Yeah, I believe it, I'm sorry, my, my name is Saskia, I lost, also I'm in Rock. Uh, it was March, uh, I'm sorry, May fourteenth.
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
Sorry, here's, Saskia's a new resident in the village and volunteered to all on her own, nobody trusted her.
Sheriff's, yeah, sheriff's.
So she's here to, she's been very involved and is quite talented and is here to talk about it if anybody has any questions.
Well, you said the program's not really set up yet, you're working on, it's in the works.
Yeah, well, it's still in development, but we definitely have activities being planned for kids and music getting set up and so things are pushing.
Any other questions or concerns?
There'll be something, there won't be a yarn bomb, but we're plotting something else as a surprise. But you can't talk about it unless you call me and I'll tell you. And then we'll make you participate.
I make a motion that we contribute fourteen hundred dollars to the Riverside Arts.
Grant.
Grant. Grant, okay. To be used for children's programs and, well, you're requesting the other was for entertainment.
The, yeah, the stage and music.
And entertainment.
And as usual, I second the motion. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You'll have something about sponsored by Riverside Township or whatever, like we always do, right, yeah.
And, and we also, if you want, I know that you have literature for the township, but you're always welcome to give us pamphlets or cards or something that we can put out at the information table.
Yeah, we can give you newsletters.
I can check with you as the date approaches.
We can give you a bunch of newsletters to put out.
Yeah, absolutely, we have it this month.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's a nice event.
Tell me your name again?
Saskia, it's S.A.S.K.I.A.
And where do you live?
Uh, in Riverside, Donshen Stone. We always want to ask.
Yes, why?
I know, I know, I always have to know where they live.
It's so funny, people don't ask what you do, they ask what you do.
Riverside Women's Club is asking for a grant for twelve hundred dollars. We gave in two fourteen, we gave them four hundred.
I recommend we double it. Maybe give it eight hundred.
Do I hear a second?
Rather than increase it.
They're asking for twelve hundred, aren't they?
Yeah. They got four hundred last year.
And that was for pizza for their party. Do they say what this is for? I mean, besides going to help put on this event?
That's it?
Not in detail.
Well, there's a copy of their contract and it's, the show is a thousand dollars for an audience of up to a hundred and then ten dollars a person thereafter, and they are expecting two hundred people.
Do I hear any other?
I think eight hundred is reasonable.
Yeah, so you second it?
I would second that.
Are you seconding it?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for eight hundred dollars to the, Riverside Juniors Women Charity.
Okay. Um, the Chamber is asking for a grant of a thousand ninety-five dollars. Now, what, um, we have to remember, we do the, we gave them a thousand fifty for the porta potties in two fourteen, they'll probably be coming back for that.
That's what this is for?
The cruise night, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. So.
Well, it's for three cruise nights and then, excuse me, the car show, that's all day in September.
Right.
And the price is up a little bit from last year.
Yeah, forty-five dollars, something like that.
I make a motion that we grant the Chamber the one thousand ninety-five dollars.
Do I hear a second?
We've always purch, made the purchase on.
Right, we always purchase it and then they send us, you know, an invoice and we pay it that way.
Well, in fact, they're attached, so.
I second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried to purchase the porta potties for the.
No, they're rentals.
The rental of the porta potties for the cruise night and the annual car show for the Riverside Chamber of Cameras in the amount of one thousand ninety-five dollars.
Riverside Public Library, ordering, they're looking for a grant for five hundred dollars for books, learning materials. And we, la, last time we didn't do anything, they didn't ask for one two fourteen. And two thirteen for summer reading program, but they're asking for five hundred dollars now. Do I hear a motion to grant them five hundred dollars?
Well, we've, we would again purchase some materials, but I don't understand where Janice came up with that number. 'Cause the attachments.
Two thirty-seven.
The attachment says the order from Amazon would be two oh four ninety-six. And when I looked at the pricing on all of these different items using Amazon, it totaled up to a hundred ninety-three seventy. And that included the order from Lake Shore Learning. So I don't know where, how she came up with this. And even with her calculation, that doesn't amount to five hundred dollars. I mean, unless I missed something here, but I don't see it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, she's got nine ninety-nine, twenty-four ninety-nine, that's twenty-five cents. It can't be twenty-four ninety-nine a cent, so.
Where, what are you looking at, Rich?
The back page.
Oh, the back page, yeah. No, I think that's.
That's for all of it.
Yeah, and that's thirty-four ninety-eight, and on her sheet, she has that listed as thirty-two ninety-eight. So I think that's slightly, should be slightly more, two dollars. But the other ones, the only other one that I saw that came up to the same price as she has listed here is the second one for programming for forty-nine ninety-nine. And all the others were, the first one was forty-seven fifty-nine, the third one on electricity was forty-six ninety-nine, and then the last one on magnetism was fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. I don't know if I'm missing something here.
I don't think you are, Ian, I mean.
But, I mean, I'm looking at the, this is all Amazon price, and the price, the list price is higher, but the price that you're getting on Amazon is cheaper.
And it's like on the first page, they broke it down.
That's not even right.
But what does your total come to?
Well, my total comes to a hundred ninety-three seventy, and if we're gonna be buying this for them, which is what we would do, I just don't know how she came up with five hundred dollars.
I think we need to ask her for more information and revisit this, you know, have her give it in more of the detail.
Will table to next month?
Table it to next month. So do I need a motion for that?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table the Riverside Public Library grant to next month and get more information from Janice.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, any opposed? No. Um, next grant is for Hollywood Citizens Association for a thousand dollars, which we gave in two fourteen. We missed two thirteen on them. And then, actually, it's their one hundredth anniversary. That that building's been standing there, you know where that's at? Behind the torn down Chury Stadium.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to grant Hollywood Citizens Association a thousand dollars?
Sub move.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for a thousand dollars to Hollywood Citizens Association.
North Riverside Little League Grant. Um, North Riverside Little League is asking for a grant to, to sponsor, oh. Well, to help with a hundred and fifty kids participating in baseball and softball for North Riverside.
I move we grant for. Riverside Little League, four hundred and fifty bucks.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried for four hundred and fifty dollars to the North Riverside Little League.
Here's a grant from, yeah, Aging, Aging Care Connections for fifteen hundred dollars. To help the members, you know, from our community out. Do I hear a motion?
I move we grant them the Aging Care Connections, fifteen hundred dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You two fight it out, who's second? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Gaisman?
Yes.
Trustee Kabinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is a budgetary transfer. Lane, you wanna?
Agree to be more careful in the future. Ann has given me a, an acknowledgement of this. And the day, the, the spaces are inconsistent. After the eighth day of April. day of April and so on, and it's true in about 10 cases.
But the text is correct.
Yeah, but the English part of it is lacking, but I'll be, I'll prove that the next time.
So, you're making a motion for the budgetary transfer?
Sure.
Of 17,000 dollars?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Loofah's, uh, new contract for, uh, grass cutting?
I'm sorry.
Um, full service for two fifteen, they've been doing a wonderful job, I think. I mean, you know, correct that for it. Pardon me?
I'm talking to Ann.
You see all what they're doing and the, you know, they're asking for the total cost for their program, 1,050 dollars, um, when, uh, it is accepted upon, um, do we, do I hear a motion to accept?
This is through March 15th through December 1st.
Right.
I will make the motion to accept the Loofah landscaping contract.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns?
Uh, one thing I would like to see is, I would like to see Riverside Township named as an additional insured on their certificate of liability insurance.
Good point.
Any other questions or concerns? Do I hear a, um, can we, uh, vote on it, um, it was seconded, right?
Yep.
Um, with the additional of, um, Ann's, um, additional insurance?
They shouldn't have any problem with that.
No. I don't think it'd cost them anything.
No.
Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Um, Independence Day handouts, wanna go with the beads again?
First, we have to, uh, make a motion that we're gonna be in that, right? That we need to...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We haven't got any information, but we gotta order the beads, because they usually come out, God knows, really late.
Oh, well, here's the application right here, here, for the parade.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we participate in the 2015 Riverside Parade on Saturday, July 4th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? I, any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, the beads. There are only 48 beads. I mean, not packets, strands of beads left from last year, and we had added on to last year, too.
And we also use those in the North Riverside Parade?
Right.
And then, that was the other parade, right?
Right.
And did you have enough in North Riverside, or sort of?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, we did, we were, we were skimpy. No.
Okay.
But I know, I think if we're gonna use the beads to both Riverside and North Riverside and not use candy in North Riverside, then we probably need to order a few extra boxes...
Oh, yeah.
...of beads.
They've become more popular every year.
Yeah.
They've always been popular. We just haven't had enough to hand out a lot, you know? Um, okay.
Well, what if we get like 25 dozen?
Why don't we just go 30, 'cause we can always use it to play it safe. You know, they'll sit around, we can give them out during the year or two, they come in handy.
Sure.
Yeah.
So 30, uh, 30...
30 dozen.
At 28.50 a box, or a, a case? Uh, 20 dozen in a case is 28.50 a case, um, so you're looking at 30?
I'm looking at 26, 25, or is this, oh...
That's the last year.
Last year prices?
28...
28.50 is the new price for a case. Well, you know what, will they break a case? 'Cause you're asking for a case and a half.
No.
So, uh, one case, well, you can get a dozen, you can get 12 necklaces.
Yeah, but then that's, you're paying more.
But, um, so one case is 20 dozen, is that right?
Yes.
And last year we had 10 cases.
Plus we had...
We had some leftover from the...
Yeah, I think we had about 4,000 beads left over, 4,400, that sticks out in my mind.
So, um, we're talking about, um, increasing our order to 20 cases, then?
No, they're asking... No, go on.
Or 15 cases.
No, 30 cases.
That's 60 dozen, huh?
Yeah, that's three times as much.
Well, go 25 cases?
Sure.
25?
25's good.
Okay.
Uh, 30 cases was 855 dollars, so...
25 at 28.50 each, correct?
Times 25.
For each case, yeah.
So that's 712 dollars and 50 cents if we go with 25 cases.
How much was it, seven what?
712.50.
For 25?
For 25 cases.
And how many is that?
You show me.
20 dozen, like, how many beads is it, 20?
Yeah, it's 25 dozen.
So, uh, 20 dozen per case, so 20 times 25, 500 dozen.
Maybe 5,050 or something like that, 5,250?
I don't have my calculator.
I have 6,000, is that, 6,000?
Well, 10 cases, 20 dozen per 20 cases, times 10 cases is 2,400 beads, so...
Double it?
Yeah, so...
Yeah. So we're talking 4,800 plus half of that.
I still come up with that 6,000 beads.
He's probably right.
It is right, because it's one and a half times more than what we had last year.
So, I mean, that's fine, right?
So we're gonna go 25 cases?
25 cases.
Is that a motion by you, Trustee Clark?
Uh, yes.
Let's give each of us 1,000 to distribute.
Our arms will be broken. We'll be running really fast this year.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, then, do we, will we get an application then for the North Riverside Parade?
We should, yeah.
We should have to get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or I can always call him about, you know, the parade, but, you know...
Okay, how many cases did we order?
25.
25 cases.
25 cases.
Okay, mental health board, um, I talked to Les, talked to Ann, the person that was, you know, originally, we thought was gonna be, uh, she has not returned any emails, any phone calls, no nothing. I've written her letters, you know, so, you know, I've got some feelers out, but if anybody knows anybody from North Riverside that can represent North Riverside's interest on the mental health board, let us know.
It might have, you know, it'd be nice if they had some experience with...
Yeah.
Someone who was, you know, mentally or developmentally challenged, uh, those people would tend to be, you know, it don't have to be, uh, you know, with that background, but...
FYI, we got the Eastland, which we talked about in February 22nd at 2:00 PM, we got the Toy 215 Educational District Registration, is hanging on the board. Any further visitors' comments?
I did forget to mention that I have two seminars scheduled at the library on Thursday the 19th, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00.
I saw that, that's what made me think about bringing the Eastland, and I see those all the time over there, and I think that's a great idea for them to do.
February 19th?
Bless you.
Yes, February 19th.
Nope, what were the times again?
2:00 and then get it 7:00.
2 and 7, library.
Yes.
Ann.
Okay, I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 8,498.57 cents, as presented to this board the 10th day of February 2015.
I second. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Um, next, a motion that the board ratified and approved payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 2,573.26 cents, payroll warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 16,882.42 cents, health warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 2,544.57 cents, monthly filings, February 2015, in the amount of 3,872.34 cents, grants, February 2015, in the amount of 4,500 dollars, actually, it was just the reissuance of a check, it's not a new grant, um, general assistance warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 1,800 dollars, and township radio players warrant, February 2015, in the amount of 173.36 cents.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Is that it?
I make a motion.
Wait a minute, supervisors' comments and reports yet, Wayne. Um, let you know, uh, on, uh, January 18th, I had a presentation over at the Riverside Presbyterian Church about the food pantry, spent around four or five hours over there. There were a lot of people in the, I mean, it was up in one of the separate rooms, many people in the audience, I was invited to speak about the food pantry, and, um, they had a lot of questions, you know, which were answered satisfactorily to them, obviously. Um, you know, that's it.
I mean, they asked you to come over and talk about that?
Yes.
Is that, uh, to the, like, the human scene?
Pardon me?
Is that to the human scene class, was it at 9:00?
Yes, it was. I didn't know what it was called, would just be there at 9 and talk to whoever, so, so, can't remember his name, tall guy?
Uh, was it Doug?
Got the strange gla- strange glasses, that break in the center and always gets into the side, they were kinda neat, but a little strange, I never saw him before.
Um, the Presbyterian Church is a little bit in flux right now because we let go of our old minister, and we're searching for a new minister, but Doug, who used to be at the Methodist Church, is now living in the mansion of the Presbyterian Church, so he's assisting with pastoral duties.
Okay, Wayne, you're up.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All second, okay, all in favor.
I thought for a minute we were gonna be here for another hour.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'm gonna have... I will leave the donut.